Hello, I'm Caroline Middleton. I am the SOC President and these are my SOC Officers at Thomas Nelson. Today, we are focusing on this idea of General's Lead. With this idea, there are three separate ideas of Connecting, Caring, and Creating. Those break down to focus on Student Sovereignty, Sustained Collaboration, and Active Citizenship. As student connectors, creators, and carers, we are focused on the celebration of each other, developing rituals and traditions, breaking down the layers of collaboration, exploring fly-closer opportunities, taking community ownership, and coming back to our common focus. We as students have waited in the past for teachers to tell us what to do and how to create, but through this class, we've been able to be the conductors of our student body. This whole SOC class focuses around the idea of being the Purple Cow and truly saying yes to new ideas and opportunities that come our way. As student leaders, we are focused on this idea of everyone leading, and that is expanded to our SOC class, our half-steward class, and our peer tutors. In the past, we've seen set groups of students being the leaders, but as years have gone on, we've seen that expand, and this year, we've allowed it to expand a lot more through new opportunities. In order to be successful, we recognize that we need the time and space to be able to collaborate with one another and to really connect with our whole school and our community. The SOC stands for Student Organization Council, and it consists of one representative from each organization at Thomas Nelson. There are also five officers: President, Vice President, Press Secretary, Director of Public Relations, and Chief Financial Officer. Each SOC representative has a SOC sponsor that is specific to their organization. They're also a part of a small group with one officer, and each officer has specific responsibilities that go along with their role. This is Caroline Boone's small group, and we were actually able to choose these small groups this summer, and that really allowed us to choose people that would make our groups well-rounded. So through this class, we focus on this 60/40 ratio. 60% of the time is focused on each individual representative and how they can make their organization developed and to make it better for the future. 40% of the time is focused on our overall SOC collaboration as a whole, and it's where we're really able to brand and make new ideas together. At the top, you see a document, and this is what we call Flight Plan. There are weekly and quarterly goals that I have set for myself and that my sponsor, Ms. Newton and Coach Hoyes, have set for me, as well as at the bottom, called a Living Collaboration, where Coach Hoyes can put in specific tasks for me to do as the cross-country representative. You can see that it says XCTF Blog Updates, and what that means is that I'm responsible for updating our blog that the rest of the community can do. One main component of SOC is our Monday Cup of Joe meeting, and that is our official meeting, where we take time to celebrate one another and address business items that we're able to work on for the rest of the week. This is an e-card. I'm sure at least one of you in this room have received one before, and this is where we're able to shout out some people in our organizations or throughout the school or in the community, and just to show gratitude to them for things that they've helped us with. This is what we call a Choice Board, and each representative is very familiar with this because this is what they use during the week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays during our SOC at Toomey time, where they're able to work to develop their organizations. And you can see at the bottom, it says SO Blog and SO Public Relations, and this is where they're able to reach out to the community and tell people what's going on in their organizations.
Hello, I'm Alex Barlow, and I'm the SOC Vice President. In my Flight Plan, it's included that me and Caroline collaborate on the Monday Cup of Joe agenda, and the Living Collaboration portion of this document, my sponsor puts in there what he wants me to get done throughout the week. As a soccer representative, I helped plan the Taylor Martin Memorial Game. The Memorial Scholarship is a $1,000 annual scholarship that goes out to a female soccer player, or a female high school senior that embodies peacemaking, care, and leadership. This year, we raised over $5,300. The Purple Cow Award is an award that goes out to a SOC member during the Cup of Joe every Monday, and it is presented to somebody who exhibits all the leader values.
Hello, I'm Caroline Boone, and I'm a sophomore here at Thomas Nelson, and my officer position is the Director of Public Relations, and really within this role, I try to reach out to all of our, each SOC member has, sorry, each SOC member has a community partner that they have to work with throughout the year, and so I help them get connected with them. And I also run the SOC Twitter page and the SOC Snapchat account. Here's an example of what I do on the SOC Snapchat account. Usually, I only use this for football games, but I make a group story so that everyone at the football game can share their story, and people that are at the football game can see what everybody's up to and really get an idea of how people view the football games differently. And this is an example of what I do on the Twitter. I make posts if there's a shout, we like to shout out somebody, or we say there's themes for the football game, or just what each organization is doing. If the sports teams have a soccer game, like what time those are at, so we can be sure to let the community know what's going on, so everybody can be involved in that. And this is where I get most of my information to put on the Twitter. During our Monday Cup of Joe meetings on Monday mornings, we have shared good news, where people take about two to three minutes to go in and fill in their slide about what's been going on in their organization, so we can really get to know what each organization's been doing and really try to focus on each one, so we can let all the community members know what we at Thomas Nelson have been working on. And this is Jordan Dixon and Courtney Berg, they're our fellow SOC members, and I really wanted to show you guys this because these are really model students, and they have their community partners listed, like Jordan Dixon, he put Parkway Baptist Church, and Courtney Berg put Active Day. And this is, community partners are really important to the SOC because each organization has to go make a, I'm sorry, they have to, each organization has to volunteer at this, whatever organization they choose to pick the first of the year, and they have to do two community service projects with them throughout the year. And this is just some examples of me, pictures that I do on a day-to-day basis, like we were at the Iron Horse Festival, and at the football games, and at our SOC retreat.
Hi, I'm Grace Thurman. I am the Press Secretary. One of the main leadership roles I have is I work with the Living Leader Calendar, and I update any sport events that are going on throughout the school and any club meetings. And I also add pictures to make it a little more lively. I also work with the Living Digital Announcement, which is a more fun way to celebrate students and all their success and what is going on in the school. Me and Caroline also collaborate with the e-Hub, and it is a calendar that the students can look at in school and while they're in school. It's a way to celebrate birthdays, and it also is a way to let people know what sport events that are going on in the meetings. Me and Ms. Newton also collaborated on the G Nation t-shirts. We're also going to sell a sports pass with this, and it's a way to connect our student body with every single sport organization so they can go out and support our generals. And with Rush, our theme this year is Adventures Out There and Say Yes to New Adventures, because we want the focus to go back to what Rush is really all about, which R is recruitment. We want each student to be a part of an organization so they can connect with our community. U-unity, for example, one of our SOC members, Izzy Whitis, is connecting with the Red Cross to communicate with the school body and our community. And S, Spirit, we're going to have a Spirit Day each day to create enthusiasm that leads up to homecoming, which is a big deal for SOC because we plan it and put a lot of effort into our homecoming.
Hi, my name's Jordan Hamilton. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and one of the roles I take on as Chief Financial Officer is I make sure that our budget is accurate as well as financial forecasts. And in order to financial forecast, I look at the items we spent money on last year for program building and estimate about how much money we'll be spending again this year. At the beginning of the year, me and Ms. James collaborated together and created a presentation to show all the SOC leaders. We felt as if this was important because we wanted to ensure that they knew how to go about filling out any fundraiser form, as well as how important it is for them to keep inaccurate data over their budget. So not only do I help other organizations plan for their fundraisers, but I'm also preparing to help SOC plan for one of our biggest fundraisers, which is Winter Formal. And in order, the way I'm going to help is I'm going to make sure we use a financial sense while we get ready to plan for such a big event.
I'm Jerry Wunstead, and I'm the Basketball Representative of SOC. And to give you an idea of what I do on a daily basis, is I'll log on to my Flight Plans and look at my Living Collaboration, and here is where I've set daily, weekly goals for myself. And this is also where my coach can also set weekly goals for myself. And one goal that I've been working hard on this year is the blog, and the blog is like a central communication hub that everyone can look at, and it also shows off the organization. But every blog should have four main pillars. One is the Mission and Vision Statement. Two is General's Care, which is all the service projects that that organization is planning to do. Rituals and Traditions, and for example, for the basketball, for the basketball blog, I have our General's Madness, and our World Class Resources, which is every organization's financial goals, needs, and how they plan to meet them.
So coming back to this idea of everyone leads, we hope that the SOC is an encouragement to other people in the community to say yes, because the answer to how is?
Yes!
The next on our agenda is the Good News, and Jamie Shonoff will be going ahead for us.
Hi, I am the Digital Learning Coach, and so I'm going to formally introduce myself this one time, and then you will see me at these meetings. Recognizing educator leaders in our district in the area of technology. Being that we are a Google App for Education district, we are going to be recognizing four educators tonight that have gone above and beyond to become Google Certified Educators. And what that basically means is that they have utilized Google in their classrooms, and they have studied the training materials that Google has provided for them, and they have also taken some type of assessment that Google provides as well. And so it is an honor to have Google Certified Educators in our district. So we're going to be recognizing four of those tonight, so if you guys will just join me in celebrating these wonderful people who have gone above and beyond. So the first educator is Jessica Sheerhorn, and she's coming to us from Foster Heights. Awesome. And then we have, from Thomas Nelson, we have Courtney Newton. Also, from Thomas Nelson, we have Wes Bradley. And then we have TJ Metcalf, and he has actually earned his Level 1 and Level 2 Google Certified Educator Certificate, and he is coming from Bloomfield Middle. Awesome. So I can't wait to see you guys next month with some more leaders in technology and just being able to recognize them and all the great things that are going on within our district. Thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
Next up is our NCSC update with Ms. White.
Hello, I'm Dorothy White with Nelson County Schools Community Support Foundation. That's a mouthful. But we have had a very exciting event that we just had a few weeks ago. It was our first fundraiser event that we have had with the foundation since I've been with them, so we were very proud to have that. It was called the Tailgate Time, and it was alumni event that we had at Nelson County High School. We did quite well at that. Of course, we didn't sell quite as many tickets as we had hoped, but there's always next year, so we're looking forward to that. One of the things that we are probably most proud of with the foundation are the scholarships that are given each year, and we have added two more, which you were about earlier, the Taylor Martin Scholarship. They have two new folks that received that scholarship this year, and that was Lakin Culver, she was a 2017 recipient, and then Michaela Johnson. And both of them received a scholarship, taking our total to seven for this year, so that's double the amount that we started with the three in the beginning. And we have just been notified from the Life Touch Photography Scholarship that they have just dropped off their checks, and so that's going to be added next year, so we'll have a total of eight next year. And we're just, that is one of the things that we work on this day, because obviously that's an immediate thank you to our students for doing well, and so it makes us very excited to do that. The next thing is the different community sponsorships that we received with the fundraiser that we did. It's just getting our name out there in the community and letting folks know what we're doing. Those sponsors were Anytime Fitness, Barlow Funeral Home, Bourbon City Print, Brown and Cheap CPAs, Cecil Family Eye Care, Flower Foods, GBA Business Solutions, Clean Tech, Lincoln National Bank, Marshall Jewelers, Pro Mortgages, and WBRT, and our generous anonymous donors. And so I just want to thank you so much for making this a special time for me. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. A lot of hard work.
We skipped over the Good News, and we have a review here from Thomas Nelson.
Oh, okay. We're sorry. Come on down and give us some good news.
All right. So some good news in September. Sue Dumay and three students from the academy, Shane Johnson, Jade Ritchie, and Sahara Alvedary, volunteered to work the WHS Crusade for Children 5K that was held at Bernheim Forest. They were stationed among the 5K route, directing runners and cheering them on at the finish line. Students and staff at Bloomfield Elementary School have enjoyed doing opening activities. They have had the opportunity to learn about one another. Students have also created rules and expectations in themselves in the classroom in order to set high standards for learning outcomes. Fifth grade math groups are working on a project-based learning activity to redo the raised flower gardens outside the school. We received a grant from Soil Conservation Service for the funds for this project. Bloomfield Middle Betas reached out to their fellow Beta members at Bloomfield Elementary and Coxas Creek Elementary and asked for their support in letting the Lone Star State know they were not alone. Betas, along with students, staff members, and community members, built five SUVs with supplies that were delivered to Elizabeth Town for transport to Texas. Three other loaded SUVs made drop-offs at Nelson County libraries. We had over $500 in monetary donations that was used to purchase baby supplies. The tremendous support was overwhelming. The Boston PTA and faculty have been working hard to put together a dynamite community event, our first-ever Fall Festival on October 21st. There will be games, food, and even community booths. It will be a great time for all. Third, fourth, and fifth grade teams at Coxas Creek Elementary School are designing and implementing project-based learning units to increase engagement and community involvement. K-2 teams have begun to use a new guided reading program. We are implementing the use of the Go Math series school-wide to increase the rigor level of our math instruction. Foster Heights Student Lighthouse team did a phenomenal job planning and leading our first morning meeting on September 11th. The students led the school in celebrating student achievements and stepped out of their comfort zones to speak in front of the whole school. The Early Learning Center continues to enroll new student seats. Our teachers have leader positions for the first time since the center is open. Teachers are supporting students with leader in need through a principal committee or the school-wide behavior team. Nelson County High School had 57 students, received $6,100 worth of checks for earning a three-year-high on AP exams from the 2016-2017 school year. Grade Jod cards. Addison Smallwood, a fifth grader at New Haven, won first place in the Iron Horse Festival Art Contest. The school celebrated International Day Friday the 15th. Students showed how they were going to make their mark on the world throughout the day in various activities. Students were beginning with the end in mind as they looked for what they will become in the future. Led by the Thomas Nelson High School Student Organization Council, the annual Taylor Martin Memorial Soccer Game, partnered with the Nelson County Lady Cards and the Thomas Nelson Lady Generals, raised over $5,300 to the Memorial Scholarship Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good job. So the next up is our Operations Consent Agenda, and this consists of several documents that were sent to us prior to tonight's meeting, and I'll need a motion to approve as presented.
Love.
Mr. Jackie made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Moon, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then, under our Efficient Resource Management, we have the first item, our Working Budget, with Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening. I'm just going to hit, I know you all have the document on your Chromebook. I'll hit a few highlights of the document and try to answer questions you might have. Before I start on the working budget, I guess I would like to point out Mr. Stephen Ward back here in the back. Stephen is not on the agenda tonight, but we talked a week or two ago, and he wanted to be in attendance at this meeting because he's been a big part of this facility, getting us to today. We know we, I think we sold bonds for this school in 2008, and we opened it in 2012, and I remember Ms. Barry in many meetings expressing her desire that we wanted to get this facility finished. We wanted this piece added to complete this facility. We had good news, and then we had the road pulled out from under us when, you know, we had an economic downturn and bond proceeds weren't available to us, or bond potential wasn't available. Stephen and his firm stood by us. He's been at many, many, many board meetings, talking about the planning phases of this facility. He's been at many board meetings when this facility wasn't finished. I wanted him to get to be here tonight, you know, to be recognized for his good work. I think we all agree this is beautiful. I know they're very proud of it here at the school. I know we're proud of it as a district, so I just want to say thank you to see the more of this company for the work they did for us.
Hook and Tech doesn't get many thank yous at board meetings. Usually, there's complaints.
You wouldn't want to talk about change, George. Tonight, we don't have to do that, so we get to enjoy it. Working Budget, we approve annually in September, and I've gone through the document and highlighted a few pieces, and I'll be glad to try to answer questions if you have them as we go through it. The first highlight is just the Beginning Balance. Now, that's an unaudited Beginning Balance for this fiscal year of a little over $2,450,000 estimate. That won't be that exact figure when it's all said and done, when the audit's complete, but I feel pretty confident that's going to be very close. We've got some, my toy's not working. I didn't highlight, we've got some, at the last board meeting on Sept, and I guess the work session this month, we had an action item you all adopted, a tax rate. It's reflected in this budget, and I appreciate that. I think that was a wise move on the part of the school district and will prepare us for the unknowns that we discussed that night. Carla, if you'll go to the next page, the next item, and a critical piece, go back up a page, Carla. A critical piece I think folks need to be aware of, if you look at the highlighted number on this page, it's our state revenue. We call that SEAC, and that's, years ago, it was 70% of what we received for public education in Nelson County. Now, it's about 50%, maybe less than 50%. We've talked about that at length. You can see last year, the middle column, we received $15,173. The year before that, we received $15,283. If you go, every year you go back, we got more money. So every year that we, every year that goes by, we see less state revenue, and our estimate for state revenue this year is $14.7 million. We'll go to the next page, Carla. I don't think I, I didn't have any highlights there. That's miscellaneous revenues. If we will go to page five, next page, I believe. There we go. Highlighted just a couple of things. I'll remind you that in June, we adopted a salary schedule that included an average step for all employees, certified and classified. We also scaled and included 1% cost of living, and in our district, that amounts to about $500,000 or $600,000 annually. You also, we've talked at length about, but this really just happened last month, or, excuse me, again, a couple of weeks ago, we approved an SRO program. We're still working on that. We're in the process of getting some nurses hired that you all have talked about recently, and you see that highlighted under Student Support Services, so costs are increasing there. If we'll go to the next page. There we go. I'm sorry, Carla. We added back in the spring, we had a couple of meetings and some conversation about an Assistant Principal position at our 2K8 schools, and that's reflected in that highlighted field. And I guess while we're on this page, this is a preview of coming attractions. Jesse Morgan's up here in the top, and he and I have talked many times over the last few years. We talked again today about hoping to be able to come back to you folks in the spring for possible implement, to begin the implementation in fiscal '18, '19, to get more instructional devices in the hands of students in our district. I know Mr. Jackie's familiar with districts that have a one-to-one program, and again, we've talked many times, we're going to continue to talk about that and try to have a plan together that would phase in an eventual one-to-one program here in our district over the next few months. There's going to be some research that's required. We'll make sure we think through that. We go visit districts that have done that, learned from their mistakes. But I hope next year, when we're looking at this budget, in the Business Support Services section, 2,500 function, you see an increase in expenditures for technology in an effort to get our district closer to a one-to-one device piece for our students. That is a goal of ours. Next page, we'll talk about transportation. I've got a couple of numbers highlighted. Really, the second number was a mistake. I'm going to talk about fuel prices. I currently have a bid that's due to be opened the day of our October Board Meeting. And you all may recall that the last couple of times we've done this, we have selected a fixed price for diesel fuel. We've been able to get very aggressive pricing and save the district, I think, quite a bit of money over the last three or four years doing that, and we, once again, will be accepting a variable price quote on the day of the October Board Meeting, but also a fixed price quote, and I'll bring those to you that evening. And the reason for that, normally, we like to get that a few days in advance, so we have a chance to vet those numbers. I'm going to have to do that pretty quick on the afternoon of the Board Meeting, because I talked to two or three potential bidders. They tell me the pricing will be better the longer we can wait, so they don't have to lock in a price. Even if you're only locking it in for a few days, they say that will save a few cents a gallon, and when you buy 150, 200,000 gallons of fuel a year, that adds up, so that's the reason for that. Currently, we're estimating our fuel cost to be more next year than it is currently. Currently, we're estimating our fuel cost to be more next year than it is currently. If you went into the gas pump and filled up today, you'd see why. It's possible, I've talked to Jeff in the bus garage, it's possible when we open those bids that day, we'll reject them if we don't like the pricing we get and just buy at shelf price, which is still a discounted price for a period of time if we think that's in our best interest, until a bid price might be less. Does that make sense? We'll report all that to you on the night of the Board Meeting with the recommendations. So that's, that's highlighted there, and that's a coming attraction for, for next month. I'm gonna highlight one more field, it's towards the back of the document, it's actually not highlighted in your version. It is on page, excuse me. Page nineteen, Carl, if you can find that. The, on page nineteen, far right column, second number from the top, what that number represents is the unobligated amount that you have coming into the district this year for capital projects. Does that make sense? So what that means is, we don't have a bond payment, that, that is going into the bank, and we don't have to make a mortgage payment on it for fiscal eighteen. And we've talked about this a few times, we are accumulating, excuse me, cash for whatever next project we decide to undertake when the time comes, and I know that's of interest to all of you, I wanted to point that out, it's almost $400,000, and obviously, that's a positive thing. And now that we're earning interest, again, effective July 1st, with our bank change that you recall back from a few months ago, every dollar we put in the bank, we're now earning a little bit of interest, nothing like we did a few years ago, but we are earning something on those deposits now. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you all have any, or try to.
Mr. Norman, that specific, that last item that you mentioned, that just shy of $400,000, that is before any potential action that the legislature may take next spring, correct?
That's correct.
Not, not that I'm hopeful with everything that we read, that there's going to be a windfall of construction bond dollars available to school districts, but this is just what we've got right now already.
That's correct, and any action they take in next year's session wouldn't be for fiscal eighteen, it'd be for fiscal nineteen, it'd be for the following by any of them. So, but you're right, and, and they're, we hope they do fund some growth in the FSPK equalization piece, which will increase capital funds available to school districts. We hope that happens.
And I'm also gonna assume, cause I mean, the, the answers are still unknown a lot at the state government level, but I think if I remember right, the day after our tax hearing and work session at the beginning of this month, is when the governor announced a seventeen point five percent cut across executive branch, and I know that at KD level, Department of Ed level, there's a lot of scrambling trying to figure out what does that mean, since the majority of the funds that are budgeted towards education at state level are passed through, they don't stay in Frank, they pass through to school districts. At some point, I'm going to assume probably, maybe even assuming before then this calendar year, we'll probably be looking at some of these numbers, and there may be some adjustments as far as the revenue, pass-through revenue coming from the state level.
Fund two certainly would be affected if, if our, if our state grants are affected. We did receive an email from the Frisky folks in Frankfurt, just a note, it's not a, just a, be forewarned that we've received this documentation or this, this information from the governor's office, and, you know, this, this, everything rolls downhill here.
Sure.
You know, that funding is ultimately gonna come back to them to turn back into the governor's office from these school districts in the Frisky, whether it's Frisky, whether it's ESS, whether it's Instructional Resources, the old textbook money, any of those things. Now, of course, we know that's, there's some dispute right now as to whether or not they can enforce those cuts, that's sort of up in the air, so we wait, and we wait, and we wait.
Yeah, that can be an all-rangy-day fund.
And what, what you'll see is, those grants are tracked in Fund Two. We didn't spend much time on Fund Two tonight because it's money in and money back out, but what will happen is it will impact Fund One because Frisky staff is in place, it's already in place. So if they cut Frisky grants, or instructional resource grants, or other things, and the, we've already spent the money, then we're going to be tapping into contingency, because it will have been too late for us to have stopped things. Mr. Frisky's the best example, because that's virtually all staff, virtually all staff.
We're already a fourth of way into the fiscal year.
Right.
With seventeen point five being overhead. I know that this morning, it was announced that a lot of what's being looked at is flex funds, and in fact, even with the KETS offers, the technology offers that go out to school districts, normally those offers would be going out sometime within the next three to four weeks. Those are on hold right now, they're froze because it's not known whether or not those will have to be impacted as well.
This budget also reflects something we talked about at the tax hearing, you know, we know of a CERS match increase for this year, we know of that. We also know that something big is likely coming over the next few months, and there's a really good chance that that is going to impact school districts significantly. Again, I think I shared with you folks, and it's possible projected increase of about eight percent in CERS match, and see, an eight percent increase in CERS match for our district will be $300,000 to $350,000 right off the top of our budget. That needs to happen, we want retirement checks to clear, but we have to plan for those type of things, and we're trying to do that in these budgets that we bring to you. Any other questions?
Then I'll need a motion to approve the attached working budget for 2017, 2018. Ms. Berry made the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Dye, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is the addition of accounting clerk, one position.
For some of you who've been in the district for a while, know that we had an adult basically at our front desk for a long time, and that person moved to another department, we've never replaced them. We have students there, I think they do a wonderful job. We find more and more that really need an adult there that can help do some supervision and help do records and filing, that we can't let the students be in the confidential records. So we're asking you to be able to add one account clerk, that we're gonna use that reception, use in human resources to help with filing, and to just kind of take some of the slack up in the building, too. So that's what we're asking for.
And so this is the, the adult that's gonna be at that front desk.
Yes, ma'am.
To greet folks when they come in.
Correct, and we are still gonna keep the students now, we don't want to take that away from them.
Sure.
But somebody there that can help supervise them full-time, again, can do things that we can't let students do.
Then I'll need a motion to approve the hiring of an account clerk of reception and human resource support.
Motion.
Ms. Dye made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, under our college and career readiness, we have a grant update with Mr. Deagle, and he's gonna talk to us about Better Days Through Better Ways.
Okay, we have a decision paper in front of you, so I guess we'll be looking for a decision on this. This is gonna run away from, I don't keep it from crashing. Anyway, we, this is a, the Grantford Nelson County FFA, they're applying for $1,000 to support a program through the National FFA Foundation, and it's a year-long service project that supports the grazing of broiler chicks, and it's, the whole intent of the program is to show how to, it's a, it's a hunger program, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here looking at this, and I can't read it, I forgot my glasses, so I apologize. But anyway, it's a, it's a sustainable hunger program that they're demonstrating from grazing these broiler chicks, and involves processing and the chicks after they're grown and preparation. And I think the budget is right on target as far as what they're asking for, I think it goes like $50, $50 over, which is, they're gonna cover from the local banks, so there's no funding required beyond this, and are there any questions?
No, no questions.
No, very supportive, it's a great idea.
I think you're just remembering the conversation at the work session, that this is from birth to someone's tongue.
Yes. We'll just leave it at that, right?
Absolutely.
All right, then I'll need, okay, then I'll need a motion to, do you want to do them all at the same time, or do we, really individual?
Individually.
Okay, so then I need a motion to approve the, the request for the Nelson County FFA to apply for grant funding from the Kentucky FFA Foundation through the Better Days Through Better Ways program.
Great idea, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Jackie, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then next up is our Tri-County United Way, Team Up, and Village Frisky.
These are two applications from two of our Frisky units that are applying for funding through the Tri-County United Way, and it basically supplements funding they already received, helps them do a little bit more with their money, take it a little bit further. One's asking for $2,500, and the village is asking for $2,100. And so there's a little bit of variation between the two, depending on what programs they specifically wish to support, but every, every year, this is, and I ask for supplementary funding, and that's what this is, and so I'm asking you all to take a look at that, and hopefully approve it.
Awesome. I'll need a motion to approve the request for Team Up Frisky and the Village Frisky to apply for grant funding through Tri-County United Way.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Dye, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is our student stakeholder engagement, and first item is the superintendent selection process. So, at our working session, we listened to two groups, we listened to the KSBA and KASA give us a presentation on what they could provide us as far as services through the superintendent selection process. So tonight, what we should do is we should go ahead and vote on which group we would like to head that up.
You know, and I think at the work session, and both presentations, I believe all of us, and we listened to them, saw that there were similarities, there were differences between the two, but I, my gut kind of told me as I listened to some of the questions that we were asking, is that we probably would be well off with either one. We could almost flip a quarter, both would probably do a good job. I, I do believe in this, just personally, that the presentation made by the Kentucky Association of School Administrators, KASA, there were some things on it, even though it was a little bit more expensive, not much, but a little bit more, that kind of stuck out, things such as the onboarding of the new superintendent, the support that they would give that superintendent, their thirty, sixty, ninety day plan, and the fact that they would be working with them on their own professional growth and development during that first year as superintendent. A couple of other things that stuck out to me that were a little bit different, KASA also offered, they showed for specific, what I'll term add-on.
Services.
Services, exactly. I, I know there was one, and I forget the name of it, but whenever it was mentioned, Ms. Breeding, you perked up and chimed in on that when it was the.
The strengths.
The strengths, the strengths survey that they would be doing with the potential candidates. I know for myself, and probably for most of us, hearing about that add-on piece for stakeholder surveys, and by stakeholders, it's not just the five of us as board members that would be working closely, it's not just staff within the district, but it's the community stakeholders as well, that that was something that kind of gained my interest, and I'm seeing a couple of heads that are nodding as well, that some interest in that, so that we can identify what qualities are we looking for in that next superintendent.
And, you know, and I think, and again, I think they vote, you know, to a fabulous job for us, but I'm all about that, the holding onboarding piece, and I think it's so very important that, you know, whoever is, you know, selected as the next superintendent, that they have that support, whether this is their first time as a superintendent, or whether they've been a superintendent before, and, you know, either way, they're gonna get the support for that first year, which is so crucial when you're hiring.
Well, and I think to Mr. Salia, Owen Saler, that came and did the presentation, he was a former superintendent, just retired June 30th, from the Davis County school system, hopefully I said that county name right. I know there's always a lot of contention about how you pronounce it, but I think that he himself also would, if we go with the KASA route, that he himself would also bring quite a bit to the table as far as leading that effort as our partner in that, the help that he could give to us as board members, as well as the search committee. I know there's at least one search, two search committee members in the audience tonight, and I think that perspective of having been a recent superintendent also could be very helpful as far as what are the things to look for, and what are the things to be cautious about.
I have a question. Before we vote, I want, the KASA is the one that had the services of doing community surveys, community forums, they were, had a much stronger community piece. Am I correct, remember correctly?
Yes.
That's the way I interpreted the presentations. Okay. Just wanted to make sure before we voted.
I think KSBA would as well. I, I liked the way KASA kind of presented that, because that is definitely something that we're looking for as far as making those connections.
I didn't take that away from the first one, I took that away from the second one, so that's why I wanted to clarify, to make sure that when I voted, I voted for who I thought I was.
No, no, you're, you're both accurate on that. I mean, KSBA also does that type of work, but I would agree, KASA, and what we heard that night, and how they were focused in on that piece, and whether it's because, and I'm sure both, both organizations, you know, they understand the concerns that have come up within the community, whether it's because KASA latched on to that and recognized that could be a selling point for them, and they went above and beyond in focusing on that, or whether that's just their standard spiel. You know, I, I would agree with you that, that's a piece that we definitely want to make sure that we have as part of this search firm.
Advocate for that strength finder, because, you know, you always want to make sure that you have the right people on the right foot of the bus, and that is definitely a survey test, so to speak, that will kind of draw out what an individual's natural, you know, strengths are, and I think it is, I think it's key.
I will also add, and some of this may end up being a question on, if that is a route that possibly make a motion to go that, KASA route. Maybe a question for Mr. McKay. I did go on and ask the KASA representative who presented, that if we were to, to go towards them as the search firm, did they have to know ahead of time, did we want a specific add-on? Specific add-ons, all of it, or that we just wanted to continue to talk with them and find out, after we said we go with them, hey, these are the three, these are the four, however many that we do want to add on? They said they will work with us, however that needs to be, and so I throw that out because I don't know that if at some point, if a motion is made, whether we would need to make the motion to say up to all of them, or whether it needs to be very, very specific.
Maybe a motion just to authorize negotiating with KASA.
Okay.
Cover the spectrum.
Gotcha. I'd hope that would be the answer that you would give here, so.
So then, any other discussion?
I just like the idea of, of the continuation of growth after, after they're chosen.
That's right.
Yeah, for the year.
That's right.
That, to me, is really important, because that way, they've got an idea of what we want, and they can make sure, if I'm right now, they can make sure that we're on the same path. Is that the way we interpret this?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna go with then.
And then the things that, you know, we would want to see, you know, happen as far as, you know, setting goals and things like that, I mean, they will actually work with us to establish those for that first year, I think is all.
Yes, that, that's.
I think it must have, KASA, I think, in my opinion, um, and I think we, we need that right now. I think only one of us has been through that hiring process and that's taken, and I think, speaking for myself, I need that, so.
Well, I think, I think we heard that the, even the, the search committee, that's a huge task.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if, if the members that are part of that search committee have ever been through anything like that before, we owe that to that search committee as well, to have that facilitator, to have that guidance, uh, to assist them in the part that they play in this overall process. I mean...
Well, I'm sure it's going to be an eye-opener when the search committee gets into this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, with that, and if, if you'd like me to, Ms. Breeding, and I'll try and trampoline off of what Mr. McKay was saying, you know, I'll make a motion that we select KASA, the Kentucky Association of School Administrators, as the search firm that we work with, and authorize, uh, negotiating with them on the package of services that we will use with them.
Okay, so, Mr. Jackie has made a motion for, uh, to select KASA, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Norman, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then next up will be our guest comments, and any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes, individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Okay, then, then I'll need a motion to adjourn, uh, regular session.
Motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Dye, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, will be adjourned.
Uh, at this time, I want to just thank Mr. Bradley and the staff at College Nelson High School for allowing us to be here tonight, to walk such a wonderful facility, and thank you for, uh, providing this space for us tonight. Also, want to remind everyone that at 7:00 tonight, there's a town hall meeting at Barstown High School with our state Senator Jimmy, Jimmy Higdon, and our state rep Chad McCoy, all dealing with pension crisis in our state, uh, which, uh, several teachers and us are here, so I, and all of you that can attend, I would recommend that you go, board members, and many of you all can go, it'd be great. I know, um, David's going for sure.
Oh, I'll be there.
So, uh, just want to remind everybody with that. Thank you.